The Lancaster Select Board meeting, regular meeting for Monday, May 20th, 2024. First item not on the agenda is to welcome our new colleague Ralph Kifford to the board.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. We have approval of the minutes on the agenda, but they haven't been fully submitted, so we're going to kick those to the next meeting. And we will move into public comment. So as is always the case, if you wish to participate in public comment and you're in the room, you can come right up to the podium, tell us your name and address. You get two minutes to comment. And then if you would like to comment online, please throw up your virtual hand and we will call you in order after the people in the room have had a chance. Do either of you wish to address? Okay. Anybody in public comment online? Anybody? 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 Okay. Seeing none, public comment is closed. So that was, that's a record time. And on to administration, budget and policy. So the first item, and I asked for Kate to take us through a lot of this, which is the 2024 Town Meeting and Annual Town Election Results. There's a few categories here, one of which is the impact of the failure of Question One, which was our effort to take the police department membership out of civil service, and then to discuss some future ballot questions that will be coming in the next year. So do we want to start with impact of Question One? Kate, can you take us through it? And I know, I'd love to hear from the chief if he's willing to opine with us.
So the impact to Question One, I guess most notably is financial. So civil service goes through a test, and these people make a test, people take a test, and then they get onto a list, and the list is your given priority for, and I think it's like eight or nine different, but by disabled residents, people who are the children of a permanently disabled person injured in the light of duty, all the way down through different veteran statuses and then different residency statuses. And so unfortunately, at this time, the list that we, that is currently out doesn't have anyone that we know of that is living close enough to Lancaster and is already certified. And so Chief Moody can talk more about this, but he has put in the paperwork to see if there's any civil service person from another civil service community that would like to transfer to Lancaster. There's a couple of other things that we, we can kind of turn over those rocks, but in the worst-case scenario, we will get a new list in July, and those persons that meet the location criteria will have the ability to be interviewed, and should they pass through that, have to do a complete medical and emotional background screening and psychological exam. And if they pass that, the town would then put that individual through the police academy. That's about 26 weeks or so. The cost of the academy is about $4,000. We then pay the individual to be in the academy, and that person would get the step one of the regular union contract for the entirety of the time that they're there, so all told at about $44,000. Then they would come back out of the academy and be considered sort of a junior officer on something called FTO, which is Field Training Officer, riding along with another officer, getting real, real-time training specific to Lancaster. That takes another five to six weeks. So realistically, through all of that, we're talking, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $100,000 more than we had thought, because if we were out of civil service, it would open up the ability to see candidates from all over the Commonwealth, from other non-civil service communities, of which there are many. And I can let the chief talk more about the expenses. I think part of what I've been hearing, at least the last week or so, is that people didn't understand the question. Now, that's not to say that people did understand, I mean, I'm sure there's plenty that understood the question and just thought that this was the wrong move for Lancaster, but given the unanimous style of votes at previous town meetings to remove the town from civil service through special legislation, this was just a bit of a surprise. So if and when the select board would entertain another citizen's petition, and the reason it has to be a citizen's petition is because we have to get out of civil service the same way we went into civil service. And so we got in through a citizen's petition. So should the same citizens or similar citizens bring another one forward? I do think, particularly because we're going to have multiple ballot questions next year, including the five-member select board, that it, it would be good to have some type of dialogue about how we could get information out for and against without violating any of the campaign finance laws.
Let me ask you a question, and then Chief, if you want to sit up here while we're talking, or Commissioner, sorry.
Stay out, Sid, or everybody.
That's fine. So we would, the theory is if we wanted on the ballot next year, if we have a, when we have a special town meeting, we would consider, we'd have, we'd seek a citizen's petition for the town meeting, or can we just put it on the ballot?
You can just put it on the ballot. You've, you've done the town meeting piece a couple times.
Couple times.
And the town meeting piece to remove the chief's was successful, so that's why I have to think that perhaps, you know, we, we need to do. The caveat to that is, as you know, as a citizen's petition, we really can't spend
Town dollars.
The town dollars to be able to do that as a citizen's petition, but, you know, perhaps people who might not have understood will, will seek out a better understanding. Maybe it changes their mind, maybe it doesn't, but I think we at the town would feel better if we thought that, because people were coming out and saying, "Don't worry, we kept you in civil service," and the officers were saying, "Oh, thank you, but we didn't want that." So, you know, that's fine. Chief, Commissioner?
So, so, thank you. You did an excellent job explaining most of the bullet points. One of the important things is that we're going to have four hires in the next four years. That doesn't include the promotional process. So the way that civil service works, which is where we're forced to go through the process now, is you can, one of two ways. There's a lateral transfer, which Kate spoke on. Basically, if there is another civil service department who is willing to let an officer leave, and we're willing to accept that officer, those two departments can make a deal. I don't know of a single chief in the area, you know, given the shortage that we have of police officers in the Commonwealth, I don't know of a single chief who's, who's allowing that. It's just a bad financial practice. The second is to hire off of the list. And the way that the list works, beginning in 2022, civil service started offering the test annually. People who successfully pass the exam are placed on a list based on their preferences, such as veteran status. EMT is one of them, as well as residency. Municipalities will call for the list. They'll get a list based on score and those preferences, and then they're forced to start at number one. You do a background check, you interview the individual. If you do not have a reason to bypass the individual, you are forced to hire that person. That's not so much problematic. At least you wouldn't think so. The issue that we're having, and I'll just use this current list that we have right now, that list came out July 1, 2023. We had one single Lancaster resident who took and passed the test. Unfortunately, because the area departments were hiring, Lancaster was able to deplete their entire list and then hire the one resident that we had. And he was number 147 on their list. So that means they had invested the time and the energy to do background checks on 146 people before they got to him. So you can imagine the amount of financial resources that went into that. So we're going to be, we've asked for, one, the lateral transfer, just on the off-chance that it's out there. And then we're going to ask for a copy, and we have, we've filled out the requisition, to get a copy of this current list to see if there is a viable candidate. We would have to be able to make a job offer prior to the new list coming out. I reached out to civil service today. They believe it might be as early, as early as June 1st, which makes it very hard for us to get the amount of work done prior to. So more than likely, we'll be working off a new list, which potentially will have new candidates on it. I will tell you that a lot of the candidates are the same. They just keep taking the exam, taking the exam, taking the exam. But we'll, we'll go forward with, with that process. So it does, it does take quite a bit of time to go through it. I can tell you that the individual who was hired by Lemanster took the test, that, again, that test, those results were released July 1st. He just graduated from the academy at the beginning of last month, so he still has his field training. So it's about an eight-month process. So in Lancaster's current situation, we're looking to, to promote our lieutenant. In order to promote the lieutenant, we need to be able to fill the position that that officer would be removed from. So unless we could find a lateral transfer, we would be looking at six months best case, eight months prior to being able to do that without any financial impact. The financial impacts of, of not having the officer are the overtime required to fulfill the shift for the four-and-two rotation versus a five-and-two administrative schedule for, for lieutenant. So it's, it's a pretty big deal, especially when we're looking to go through that at least three more times over the next four years. So I would encourage anything that Lancaster can do to get this back on a ballot. And again, this is just my personal opinion with the knowledge that I have, that we should do.
Okay. Any questions? 30,000 reasons to be out of civil service, it seems. Yeah. 100,000 reasons to be out of civil service, according to Jason, which I agree. Ralph, any questions?
Yes. Lateral transfer, after, for example, Lemanster has invested, paid for the police academy, can that, is there any possibility that we could compensate them for that to facilitate?
So I don't know what the legal ramifications of that would be. I can tell you that the officers that go there are signed, they're forced to sign a contract. They would have to buy their way out. So if that's something that, if that's new wave, I haven't heard of it being done, but I would imagine that a department who has just invested $40,000 into that candidate...
If I had invested $40,000 and lost it with somebody I wanted to get rid of, which...
You can do that anyway.
And that's the other thing, right? Is you have to, you have to wonder why they would be willing to let him go.
Right.
So it's probably not a best practice. It would be uncharted waters.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's collusion, so I don't know that we can actually...
Can't do it.
Can't do it. That's the, that's the answer. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I could just make one more statement. So there was, we had a few people come up to me during the, during the elections, and they were, they were talking about what they thought there was a difference between the training that went into civil service versus non-civil service. And the hiring process is, is very much the same as far as, once the individual is chosen, everything after that is exactly the same. They have to take the same PT standards, they have to do the same mental health evaluations, they have to go to the same 26-week academy, they have to go through the same field training. Everything else is, is covered by post, police officer standard of training. They're the ones who regulate the profession of law enforcement here in Massachusetts now. So there, there is no difference in the, the training or quality of candidate. Clearly, there is a, a big impact financially, but also one of the impacts that is civil service, in order to take the test, you have to be eligible to get your firearms license, and you have to be a high school or GED graduate. Those are the only two requirements. Getting out of civil service, we could require that they take a test that is Lancaster-based that would include our policies and procedures. It could include college degrees if we wanted. It could have a residency factor. We can, we can really tailor-make it to where we're getting somebody that we want. And one of the, the greatest programs going right now, at least as, as far as I'm concerned with, you know, 29 years in the business, is what Fitchburg State University is doing. They're doing a four-plus-one program. Anyone who is over there interested in criminal justice, they, they enter the program, upon their fourth year, not only are they getting their degree, but they're getting their MPTC certificate. And in order to be in that program, you have to be citation-free, trouble-free, and basically on the honor roll for the entire four years. And they stick around for the fifth year, they get their master's degree. You're getting somebody who has proven themselves for five years to be a quality candidate. And we can't even touch those people, because unless we've gotten to them before and got them to take the civil service exam, they're, they're not eligible. So it's, it's truly a great loss for our community.
Okay. Anything more you want to add?
No, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I certainly, myself, as an individual member of the board and resident, would encourage those residents who brought forth the petition the last time to do it again. And we will work hard on a public education program that's appropriate, given the limitations that are in place, given it would be a citizen's petition, but it would be great to see that on the ballot again and hopefully pass. And we wish you the best, Commissioner, trying to get through this, but let us know if there's anything we can do. So that would lead, so then that's, that would be potentially three questions on the ballot next year.
Correct.
Which would be five members' elect board, which was through a simple petition to the town meeting, the, accepting the MGL for the Public Safety Commissioner, and then the future of civil service. So already an active ballot, and it's in 51 weeks. How fun. Okay. Did you have something? Yep?
Before we move on to the next issue, do we need to provide any guidance to the Commissioner, to Kate, to the FinCom as to how we would, what sort of investigation, how we should proceed? If we're going to need to do some hiring of, to send somebody to the academy, do we need to provide any, I'll say preliminary guidance?
I don't believe so.
No, I, I think we're going to wait to see what happens if, we suspect no one will want to transfer, but if someone does, that may solve all of our problems.
For now.
For the first one.
For the first opening, yeah.
All of our problems this year.
I suspect we'll discuss this many, many times.
I think the next time we come back to discuss it, we'll have more updates on what didn't work, so that it ends up narrowing it down to either, you know, the do-nothing, do a reserve fund transfer from Finance Committee, or something in between.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have, I asked for the current town board and committee vacancies to be discussed on this. There's a significant number of them. We're going to do, we're, they're all, they are on the, the, the town's webpage. Thank you very much. But we want to remind folks of what's out there, so that folks can submit letters. We will consider, we're going to try to hopefully do a big chunk in the coming weeks, you know, some point later in the summer to try to, if we get a lot of miraculous interest in things. But there will be a number of folks that are, that need, the number of positions that need to be filled. So please, if you're interested in volunteering, go to the webpage and look at the open boards and commissions and vacancies that are there, and then submit to myself. You can submit to myself, to Kate, Kathy Rocco, Mandy, one of the four of us, all of the four of us, some combination of the four of us, to make sure that, that that stays. Although that, that should be myself, if I remain Chair of the Board, which is the next item on the agenda, I suppose. Kate, Kathy, maybe. Anything further on that? Anything further on that? Okay. Next item on the agenda is organization of the Select Board. It's a somewhat annual rite of passage. We do need a clerk. Alex Turner filled the role of clerk. I would step back from the chair and make a motion to have Jason Allison fill the clerk's position. It requires you to sign your name many times. It's a very, very disciplined and difficult task, but I think you're up to it. So I would either, I would seek a second, if there's a second to be had.
From what I understand, reading the bylaws governing this, a second is not needed for nomination of either the clerk or nomination for the chair?
Right, but I would like...
Oh, you would like a second.
Yeah, that's why I said I'd like it.
Sure, I'm happy to provide a second.
Fantastic. Do you have anything to say? Like, please know, God?
No, yeah, happy to help.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Fantastic. Oh, and also, by the way, I forgot at the very beginning of the meeting, this is being recorded, and we, we just did our roll call by all voting. Jason is usually very good at reminding me to do that, and it's totally on me. I got good at it and forgot. All right. Next, well, unless there's a motion, there can be a motion to appoint a new chair, which , in an awkward position, I'm just going to sit here quietly.
Prior to making that, I would like to propose that in a future meeting, we set some goals for the board for the next, for this year, for the upcoming year. And then, working from those goals, develop a long-term agenda. This is something that I found to be very effective at helping a board have a direction to accomplish things, to get things done. And so whoever is elected chair, and I would be happy to have my hat and the ring on that department, I would encourage them to, to consider that as, as part of what we do.
Great. We do discuss annual goals at the first meeting in January. Typically, we go through what the town is facing and sort of chart out what we need. We certainly talk about budgetary goals, starting, I think, in July and August for the year, but certainly glad to, if I'm in the chair, glad to add it to an agenda to have a conversation about goals in general.
If I may, I'm presuming that being chair is important to you.
Important to me?
Yes.
Doing this job well is important to me, and that's the only, the only thing that's, I, I don't do this for a title of any kind. I do this because being, me serving on the Select Board, because I find it an opportunity to make a difference in our town. That's, that's the only reason why I do it. So you could call me Chief Cook and Bottle Washer. I don't really care. So, so no, being chair is not, is not important to me. I don't think it diminishes my level of service or enhances it. And also, we don't, if we're not changing chairs, which we can, if we're not, we don't need to entertain motions. We can keep me, but if people want to nominate somebody else, it's perfectly fine. It's the awkward conversation that I have at this meeting. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Yes. Hearing emotions? Am I hearing a motion? We got a long agenda, so...
Yep.
Well, for, for the purposes of moving things forward, I'll nominate myself as chair.
I tend to like seconds, but you are correct, they're not required, so we can definitely have a vote on that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And I'm opposed. So that motion fails.
I nominate Mr. Kirigan as chair.
Again, I don't think it's necessary if I'm remaining as chair, but I'm glad to have a vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. 3-0-0. Onward hope.
Mr. Kirigan?
Yes.
So I know you mentioned the planning session in January. Could we start sooner? I would love to start sooner.
I literally just said, I'm glad to add it to the agenda. So I said that a minute and a half ago.
Thank you.
Awesome. Next item is the audit review for 2023 and management letter review. Kate?
So the audit came in, it looks good. I had a sidebar conversation with Mr. Allison, and I agree that this is a lot to digest for the average resident. But I can tell you that it, it does show better financial decisions that have been made over the last couple of years. Through the board, I can do one of two things. I can ask Powers and Sullivan to come in and do a brief overview at the next meeting, or I can ask Powers and Sullivan to write a less financial speak, management review, letter, executive summary, and then if that doesn't suffice, have them come.
May I suggest, I mean, sort of...
Or both.
One and two, yeah. They could send us something in advance of the meeting that we could have a chance to review along with the audit, and then have them on hand, they can be on Zoom, but they don't have to be in the room to be able to answer our questions. Hopefully, folks, if they have questions, can get them to us and we can ask.
Okay, so that's either on 6/6 or 14 days after that, because we don't have the calendars. And apparently, it's still April here in this room.
The room that time forgot. No, it's 6/3.
6/3.
6/3 or 6/17.
Or 6/17, okay. Why don't I, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chair, ask them if they...
Yes.
Have availability or a preference for either one.
On either of those states. If they can get us at least the letter...
Yep.
And then have them come and...
I imagine that would be far easier.
If they can do that, and then, then come in on one of those states. Is that acceptable to the board? Sound good. Yes.
Yeah, so what I'm, I actually, I don't recall not having them last year, that's on me, but I really enjoyed having them in front of the board, asking very, you know, what I would imagine residents would want to ask, which are, how are we doing? You know, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conjecture, I think, at our election, not elections, at our town meetings, about our choices financially. And, and that's certainly appropriate, but it's also appropriate to have experts come in and make their determinations based on their experience. So I would like to hear both. And if we're not doing a good, good job, I want to hear it.
Right.
So we'll just see where we can be, where we can be better. I, I remember the last one, you know, I think the first two auditors that I saw, I was like, you need to have more commercial development. And I'm like, so we need to have more commercial development? They said, yes. I was like, okay, so that's our objectives, right? They're not personal people objectives, they're economic choices, goals, if I will.
Yep.
Thank you.
Awesome.
First, quite a, quite a good report, and I suspect the town administrator gets a bit of credit for that?
Nope.
I mean, I would give her credit.
No, no, really, this is, this is the excellent work of the Finance Department. Cheryl Gerby and all the people there, they do...
Who you oversee.
Well, yes.
And work on partnership.
But they're, they're auditing our books.
You can review their whole team.
They're auditing the books every month. The treasure collector and the assessor are very, very detail-oriented people, so it's good.
If an auditor doesn't find a few little things, then either they're not...
Ironically, I don't know if you saw it, but the one ding that we got is that our revolving fund balance was too high, which happens a lot. And that was because, what I had brought up in this town meeting, was that the Recreation Department brought in about $100,000 more than they had in years past. So that, that balance is about $164,000. So we were using that to pay the salary for the, for the part-time worker that's there and other things associated with that. So we will spend it.
I noticed some comments about lack of policy about some of the investments, but the investments look like they're, they're...
But just wait, because later on tonight's agenda is this 87-page document that I have for your nighttime reading.
I just want to make sure we give credit to, for a report like this.
78.
Recognition is in store.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right. Next item on the agenda is Town Charter Process and Notion Review and Discussion, which was placed on there by Mr. Allison, Mr. Allison.
Thank you, thank you. So I think this board, Ralph, previous to you, the board has talked about the desire for a charter, recommended by the state, and number one recommendation for them, from them to investigate how we can make Lancaster better. Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, Lancaster's current form of government is like 200-something years old, and it's my understanding that the bylaws have never holistically been reviewed, right? So, you know, I think that when you take a look at what a charter commission is, what it does for a town, I'm all in on it. It's a very, very high bar to form a charter commission. I'll talk about that in a minute. But what I'm looking for in this conversation, I'll open up to questions, is support from the board. I'll be prepared to make a motion to ask the Select Board to endorse, or to support the creation of a charter commission for Lancaster. And the outcome of that, Kate can go into a little bit more of the specifics later, but a charter commission would be formed after, for Lancaster, it would be 15% of the total voting residents in town, which would be 900 signatures. 900 signatures required to form a charter commission. And once the charter commission is formed, I believe, and Kate can correct me after I misspoke, once we get the 900 signatures, the Select Board then can then actually appoint the commission, and then whatever the findings are of the commission would eventually go And then whatever the findings are of the commission would eventually go to town meeting and will be voted on as far as the formation of a charter. And then from there, the evaluation happens and all these other things occur, and we get a holistic look at all the bylaws in town. So that's what I'll be seeking from the board today, from a goals perspective. This would be my number one goal, which is going to bleed into the next item we haven't started talking about yet, but I'll, I'll wait a sec till we get there. And I'm willing to take a leadership role in this. Obviously, if you all want to help, that's cool. But I'm very passionate about, you know, bringing residents in the mix, about figuring out what the next two hundred years of Lancaster is going to look like. And that's, that's what I'm going to be looking for from the board. So open to questions.
Okay. Mr. Gifford, questions?
Suze, I understand it, and I'm sure you're very well versed. We have two paths we can go down. One would be the signatures and the charter commission, the nine hundred signatures, and I assume that's an approximate number. The other is government study committee and then approval of the state legislature. You're recommending the nine hundred signatures and charter commission as opposed to the second.
Kate, do you want to review both those options?
Yeah, I'm ready now. So the, let me see. So there are two ways. So the charter commission is citizen or select board. So we did have a government, we do, did have a government study committee. I think there was discussion about, you know, what that may look like in the future years. So that, that could be it, or it can be citizen-led with a select board liaison. The process would be initiated, as Jason said, by fifteen percent of the voters going on a petition for a local ballot question, whether to adopt a new charter. And so this would have, this would happen somewhere between now and May of twenty-five, and then in March and April of twenty-five, once the petitions are, and signatures are certified by the clerk's office, we will have thirty days to adopt the order and place the question on the ballot at the next regular election. So that can't be within sixty days of that. It would be the next regular election on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. When the votes are cast on that question, informing a charter committee, votes are simultaneously cast at that time for nine commission members who qualify for nomination through a collection of voter signatures. So similar to that. So that is the charter commission duties and timeline. The commission has to complete a preliminary report within sixteen months of the vote at town meeting. Then they must publish and submit their preliminary report to the state attorney general for an advisory opinion back, and then on or before November twelfth of twenty-five, the commission completes its final report with, for two days, so eighteen months basically total. And then May eleventh, twenty twenty-six, the charter commission's recommendations are placed before the voters for exception or rejection at annual town election. And if the commission has no recommendation, then obviously no vote occurs. So the other way is through a special act. So communities can adopt a charter via special act of the legislature. The approval of the town meeting is required to submit the charter to a special act. State law doesn't mandate or prescribe any procedure for arrives, arriving at the proposed charter when a special act is drafted, but the best practice is for the town to develop a local government study committee, as we did, appointed by the select board or is directed at town meeting, should that be the way you want to go. The board is not restricted in the number of committee members. I would say if you have, you know, more than a hundred, that becomes a little unwieldy of a, of a group, but some number. Some, some number that has varying voices and opinions. The board defines the charge broadly to encompass all of the aspects of local government that they would like to view. And in its charge from the board, the committee would maybe directed to complete its work in a, you know, milestone parts. And once the charter proposal is drafted as a special act, it's then presented to town meeting for approval. And then town meeting must also authorize the charter proposal submission to the state general court. So those can happen at the same meeting. And then it's to wait for the legislature. So no one is inherently significantly shorter than the other. The special act can be shorter depending on how long it takes for the charter commission to come up with, with rules and guidelines. I will say not having a charter makes this, you know, a heavier task than subsequent years of revising a charter where you're only focused on one thing.
And then assumes the greater general court moves with all due haste.
And assumes that, yes.
Which.
I always assume that.
Which they do not. Fantastic. Any other questions?
Yes. Jason, you've put more thought into this. And would you be recommending the first approach with the collecting of the signatures or the second approach?
So I believe I'm recommending the collecting of the signatures. I truly believe this needs to be driven by the residents, right? You know, when I think about, and I think about how I would do this if I was alone, right? That's, that's how I start. And that's going door to door, and you have to evangelize, and you have to talk, and you have to. Residents really need to accept whether or not they want to be part of it. And if they don't, you know, if you can't collect nine hundred signatures, then you have your answer, right? But if you do, then that's an excellent starting place. So that's where I would propose our bar starts, is collecting of the signatures. Because the reality is, I may think it's a great idea, but if the residents aren't willing to, to sign, to, to kind of go down that route, then why bother? I mean, it's, it just means the timing isn't right. So that's why, that's why I'm proposing we go that route.
I mean, to me, the benefit of that route is exactly that. It's the citizen participation. It's getting them to have some element of buy-in and at least starting the conversation with them far earlier than if you just presented some recommendation to the town meeting. So I would concur with that generally.
It's a good thing to involve people, have the discussion. So anything that involves, gets more people involved, fosters more discussion. Whether we end up with a charter or not, I think the process could be helpful.
Great.
Cool. So I'd like to make a motion for the select board to endorse the, to support, what was my terminology? I didn't write it down. To support the, select board to support the creation, not creation, the, seeking the residents' input on the creation of a charter committee.
Say that one more time, but in one sentence.
Looking for the, I'd like to make a motion to request the select board to endorse the creation of a charter committee. Charter commission.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's exactly, I think that's what you're asking for. Because then that process begins with signature collecting.
Essentially option one.
Yes.
I, I, I want to, I want to, I believe it's option one, but I, I really haven't taken much town resources to kind of ask questions and make sure we're going.
And by the way, recommending this doesn't mean we're shooting off a starting pistol. Like, that means we can get information from Kate and council and others to say, here's how the process starts, and then we take those steps forward. This is just saying, yes, let's move forward.
I mean, it's basically like a goal, right? It's a goal of the select board to, to make this happen. As defined by MGL Section Three, Chapter Forty-three, Bravo.
Do you want to try that motion one more time?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion for the select board to endorse the forming of a charter commission as defined by MGL Section Three, Chapter Forty-three, B, as in Bravo.
Got it. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. There's a discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. All right. Three, zero, zero. We're off to the races.
Makes it clear which path is you. Just in case anybody looks at this a hundred years now from now.
As I'm sure they will be.
It's defined in the Mass General Law.
That's why we add that to the.
That's why I had him at it.
All right. Voter turnouts for town meeting and election.
Yes. So this is my dovetail. So I, I don't want to say, I think Lancaster could do better with our voter turnout. And I want to be part of that solution. So I'm thinking of an audacious goal for, for the board. And when I say the board, I'm saying that I'm, I want to take on as part of the charter work. So when I envision going door to door and working to collect six hundred signatures, nine hundred signatures, and when I, when I think through that, that effort's going to take about six months. I want to, what's that term? Invigorate? I want to.
Promote?
Promote voter turnout, both at, both at town meeting and at town election. And my audacious goal that I want to set forth for the board is two thousand. Two thousand voter turnout at town election. So I don't, I'm not really seeking anything other than this is my objective. This is my objective, and then you'll hear me talk about it. And I want it to be a thing. And, and why I'm bringing it up is, is my teammates an opportunity, say, Jason, bad idea. Jason, what are you thinking? Whatever. I don't need to talk in third person. But I really want to motivate. I want to motivate residents to come out. I think we can be better. And as part, if I'm going to be going door to door and listing signatures, why not say, hey, you know, here is, here's how you register to vote. Here's why we care about it, and keep that, keep that ball moving. So I am a little embarrassed to say that I have come up with a term to describe this. I thought of, I thought of, I thought of two thousand. I thought of, and I chose two thousand, so I was looking, Ralph, at the results of your election, and I'm like, I think we could do better. I want to do better. And when I said two thousand, I said, what do I know about two thousand? And it scores Y two K. So it's not going to be Y two K. It is going to be, it's going to be V two K. So V two K is, is cringey as it may sound. That is my byline down in the, down in the dirt. V two K is going to be my objective.
That's amazing.
And I'm prepared to come back in just under a year from now and talk about how it went.
In fairness, you did prepare us for cringeworthy.
Now that it has a slogan, does he need to get a hawkers and peddler present?
Not selling fish.
He's not selling fish, but.
So I'm open to feedback from the, I'm open to feedback from the board.
That's right.
Open to feedback from the board.
V two K doesn't stink?
And I'm not looking to have any official motion.
Okay, great. Well, that's awesome.
Are there going to be T-shirts? People love T-shirts.
We're in a thousand, a hundred thousand dollar deficit right now, so.
You're not personally. You're good. Okay. All right. Okay. V two K is off to the races. I don't think there's anything more you can say about V two K, so.
It's a mic drop situation.
Yes, definitely a mic drop situation. It is audacious. It is, I will say, it is, it is disheartening to see, as someone who's worked at all levels of government, it's disheartening to see the, the delta between town elections, which decides really a lot of things that impact residents in their day-to-day lives, more so than presidential elections. But to see the difference between voter turnouts in those two elections, which we will see this year, is staggering. Because more voices need to be heard. So I, as audacious as it is, and frankly ridiculous V two K.
I just looked it up to make sure it wasn't some like weird thing. It's not, frankly, I didn't check.
You should.
Nazi youth.
Take it back.
I would have.
That'd be bad. As audacious as it is, I, I think it's fantastic. Any effort to increase voter turnout, I think, is a good one.
I second that.
Okay. All right.
Even though it's not.
It's not a motion, but it's just an emotion. Totally. All right. Lancaster's, I tried.
That was really bad.
I tried to take some pressure off V two K, but the emotion.
No, that worked, I believe that was a goal.
Thank you. I'm here to help. All right. Lancaster Historical Commission Matters. Jason, you are on a roll.
All right, so.
Do you have a catchphrase for this? Keep going.
What would the catchphrase be? Got to, got to, got to close this out now. So as a liaison to the historical commission, working with Kate, we believe all of the matters pursuant to property has been mitigated and believe that matter to be closed. And looking for, to give you that update, we have an executive session later on to talk about what matters as described in executive session, so I won't discuss those now. I just wanted to formalize that from my position, I believe everything is done, and we will go into executive session to close out that end of the situation.
Well, and I want to thank you and the members of the commission.
Thank them, them back there.
Yes. Yes.
Tireless work.
For doing the, the great work that you've done to help us get this far. And I'm, I'm excited for what's next, but thank you very much for, for your, your work, and not only on this, but on the history of the town and protecting and preserving it. Great. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Not at this time, your honor.
Sounds good. Sounds good. All right. Human Resources Matters. Kate.
Yes, so I provided you some language for floating holiday. We have folks here who work here for us that don't always celebrate the same religious holidays, and we wanted to make sure that we were an inclusive environment for people of all races and cultures and religions. And so I was hoping to get at least the preliminary approval of the language that I put in for floating holiday, which essentially allows any employee who wishes, it's, it's a hundred percent, it's a hundred percent, I almost said it's a hundred percent mandatory.
Optional.
Optional. That you could trade any of the holidays that we are open and are functioning to use for a religious holiday or event that they would like to go to. The, the problem with having a one-for-one, for example, exchanging Christmas for the first night of Hanukkah, for example, is that the buildings are, are closed, and so that presents a public safety hazard.
So this language exempts Christmas, Thanksgiving, and New Year's Day.
Correct. Because, but, but on the other days that are holiday, we, we do have events going, like Memorial Day. We're going to be having the parade. And so should somebody wish to trade that out, to be able to use that holiday later in the year for a religious reason or observance, that would be fine. And so we, we had set up to three. You know, if, if folks come frankly and say, you know, they have five, I, I don't, I don't see the harm in that. The other thing we toyed with is just setting a bank of holiday time, but I think that gets really, really difficult to manage. So at least starting with something small and seeing how it goes.
Important to point out also, these do not roll over. People do not.
Correct. No, they do not roll over. So you'd, you'd have to use them.
Yep. Okay. Any questions for Kate? Yes, Jason.
It sounds like you've already talked to staff a little bit about this?
Yes.
And the feedback from them has been positive?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
It seems like it was born from.
And is it?
I think almost every department has persons who, you know, celebrate holidays that are not necessarily spelled out.
Does this need to be collectively bargained?
It, it will. If it impacts, it, it has, it's a positive impact, I believe, but it could be a side letter that just goes in and it will start the first of the fiscal year, which makes it a little easier.
Thank you.
Mr. Gifford, any questions?
No. When appropriate, I'd be happy to offer a motion.
Now'd be the time.
I move to add a new clause entitled Floating Holiday Bank, parentheses, optional, within the attendance and time off chapter, observed holiday section of the existing Lancaster's Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, adopted by the select board May fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three, and updated at various times thereafter.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan? Aye.
Thank you.
Three, zero, zero. Distribution of policy manual inclusive of all adopted changes and amendments.
So I was just going to say that I am going to be updating this now that we have this, and so that manual is getting very large. And so I am going to distribute it July first. We will start with our new, you know, fiscal year of bringing employees by to, you know, sign off on having received a lot of the stuff there. Do you want that electronically, or would you like it printed?
Electronically.
I knew that.
We are a reduced paper as much as.
Okay.
Note, we didn't print these. The auditor did. Financial policies, before we get to financial policies and the distribution of the draft materials, there were folks who were looking for actuals for FY twenty-three. They are in our annual report online. There's going to be some more in-depth breakdown of that in a couple of days from Kate, but you can find that online on our webpage. But just one of the folks in the last, since town meeting have been asking specific questions about actual financials for FY twenty-three, and they are available in the annual report. So sorry, I took the financial wording there. So I'm hooked to fit that little announcement in. Now Kate, tell us about the financial policies that you're distributing.
Okay. So the, in talking with both the DLS and the auditors, the idea of having centralized financial policies are our best practice. We, I don't want anyone to think that we didn't have. We, I don't want anyone to think that we didn't have them. We do have them. They hadn't been updated in quite a while, and in several cases, ironically, they refer to the town's charter, which we don't have. So I'm thinking perhaps they were done at the time when that was being looked upon.
Perhaps.
Regardless, because we don't have a charter right now, we shouldn't have policies, in my opinion, that refer to one. So the, I have gone through, it's, it's 78 pages. I figured Mr. Carrigan and Mr. Allison would want it electronically.
Yes.
But Mr. Gifford told me long printouts, he prefers in papers.
My apologies. I wouldn't have called out the, I did not know that. My apologies, Ralph.
Well, this one is 100% draft, and I would appreciate over the next month or so going through and getting your feedback. What is not in there is the newly requested CPA procedures for financial, both reporting and handing the, the bills in, because that had just kind of come up in a, in a series of emails last week. So that'll be added in once I can get together with Cheryl and go over that. But the remainder is there. I sent it to all of the department heads, and I sent it to our principal assessor and our collector treasurer. Theirs is a, is an electronic document that they can write right on it through a kind of a shareable PDF. So it won't be that easy for me to do the same because we'd have crossover. So if you do have the need, if you could do track changes, or in your case, Ralph, just mark it up.
I'm happy to do it the other way, too.
I'll send it the other way as well, so. Anyway, and I'm going to be going to the Finance Committee on the 30th of this month for their next meeting, and we'll deliver the same.
Sounds good. And so a late June goal of returning?
Sure. I mean, it's been this long.
Let's not let too much moss grow on it again, though. So thank you, Kate. Appreciate that. Next, Declaration of Real Property Surplus pursuant to Mass General Law, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes. So the last step in declaring the parcels for the, I know, this has been.
But that's.
The surplus property for a butters is for the Select Board to sign this affidavit in duplicate. As Ralph, I don't know if you know, but the other two know that I am also your notary. So as soon as you sign them, I will stamp those in, and then we can follow the procedure to actually getting the information to the butters so they can decide whether they want to.
And this is as per town meeting?
As per town meeting, and then the policies that you adopted in December of last year. When people say we move slow, I mean, sometimes it's not our fault.
And I know this is going to say your commission expires on such, just for the record, you don't get any commission.
That's true. It's okay, it's built in.
Fantastic, thank you.
The acceptance of the deed?
No, we didn't do that yet.
That was new business. Do you mind?
Go ahead. Was that, I didn't, we haven't seen that yet.
Yes, because I, it turns out that the board.
Here are these.
The board was missing a signature on the acceptance of deed when 702 LLC. And so I don't know whether it was that a member was absent or what.
So now we're re-accepting.
So we have to re-accept. So this is the open space parcels that 702 LLC gifted to the town that was accepted at town meeting, that you all verbally accepted, but I didn't have an actual document.
Fantastic. Okay.
Again, I'm, I will notarize it. Sorry, I have to say that on the record.
All right. Next is Hawthorne Lane.
You have to vote.
Oh, I'll vote on this. Is there a motion to do what we're doing?
移到
Okay.
Not good.
Thank you.
This Catholic can take some liberties with that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. Okay, you did that. Now Hawthorne Lane. Next up, Select Board Discussion Preferences, Action Items.
Would you like me to tee that up?
I would enjoy it if you did that, yes.
Okay. So as the moderator announced, the passage of the citizen's petition to accept the roadway at Hawthorne is of course non-binding, but was to serve as a litmus test for the temperature of the community relative to the potential adoption of the road and all other parcels. As you know, and as we've been over, there's, there's quite a bit here to unpack. Specifically, we need the town, and this is should the Select Board wish to engage in a manner that buttons things up and understandably is not perfect, but tries to do what we can. We need to talk to the residents of Lot 9 and ask them for an easement so that we can effectively be able to get to the water line that runs underneath those. We need to be able, the Conservation Commission had given an indication that they would accept the open space parcel with the booster station on it. We actually would need to get an access agreement for the town, to the Conservation Commission, for the small footprint around the booster station and the line so that, that if something happens, we could disturb it because it will have a conservation restriction. Mr. Malanson needs to have that parcel come out of tax title. So hopefully, if we make some movement, he will make some movement on that end because we cannot take a parcel that's in tax title. We need the water booster station that is there, should the town wish to take that on, to be, to have some kind of final inspection, as you would if you were purchasing a home, to make sure that you're buying it in good, solid, working order. Weston and Sampson has been maintaining that and being paid by the, the trust, and the road is in a trust as well. So we would need to have some conversation with them to allow Weston and Sampson to do one final inspection. I would say that the water, the water department's foreman should probably be the one with the DPW superintendent to decide what that entails. I think before the town starts thinking about the booster station specifically, that there's some maintenance that requires specialized, not only specialized training, but some equipment. And it is my understanding that we don't own that equipment. So it might be good as we explore that, which is separate from the road, but as we explore that, to have a conversation with the DPW commissioners about what, what does that mean? And is that something? And again, while it wasn't supposed to be part of the development for the town to take over the booster station, should the town wish to do so, doing so does set a precedent. And, you know, the town should be aware that that precedent is set in, in other communities that have, or other subdivisions or neighborhoods that have a booster station may wish to follow suit. And so at some point, you know, I think we need to at least acknowledge that. And I am sure that there is more, but that is the solid amount of issues that we don't yet have resolution to.
So parcel nine easement for water, to get it out of tax title. Concom giving access to maintain and run the booster.
Yep.
Inspection of the booster.
Yep.
And then there are pieces that need to be brought up to standard.
Yes, so.
Equipment that we don't own.
Equipment that we don't own. That, that is not something I have any direct knowledge of, so I won't speak on that. That'll be a water division person. But I would say also that a lot of the punch list was done, but there are still a few outstanding items. One is the fence that was installed around the booster station is directly on top of the water line. So that makes it hard should the water line need to be repaired because you'd have to also remove the fence. So the fence needs to be moved. We have told the builder that. And the hydrant that is near the booster pump station is not to grade, and so that also needs to be brought up to grade. The other hydrants were brought up to grade, which is great.
Yeah, remember they were.
So if I were a betting person, which I am not, I'm thinking that the acknowledgement that they have to move the fence, likely all of that is going to come with raising the hydrant at the same time.
And so is it safe to say finish the punch lists as?
I think yes.
Including bringing it to grade and moving the fence. Okay. Okay. Any questions? No questions.
First, for the record, I filed a disclosure relative to this issue. My property is approximately 400 feet or so, 400, actually almost 500 feet from the, from the property line. I also discussed it with the State Ethics Commission to be sure that I would reasonably in the clear, so. In addition to the list, which is a good start, please add the sewer pipes because they're also connected to the sewer.
It's not ours.
The sewer commission is ours.
Yeah.
So we don't have.
So the sewer commission is a separately, it's, it's almost like a municipality and a municipality.
Right, yes. Definitely being also a sewer commissioner.
Right, sure.
But I would like to find a way to cooperate on this.
Sure. We, we just can't have that as.
We can't cooperate.
We could have a separate agreement.
That would be, that sounds perfect. Let's.
I was just going to make a comment about revisiting our bylaws and how all of our municipality things work, so.
Okay. Any comments? I don't, you didn't have any questions?
With this list, I assume will need to involve multiple people. Will you be kind of overseeing the list, or do we need to designate somebody to?
She and I, or did you, you and I met with, had the conversations earlier?
Yep, and then you all said, Jason and I.
I'm kind of, I was approved the liaison like four years ago.
I've been dealing with it for about two years now.
Almost every day of your two years.
Almost every day. So, you know, happy to have somebody else steer the ship, but we're at the.
Sorry. Did I laugh out loud there?
We are at the, well, I hope we are at some, some.
We are rounding the corner.
So what I, what I needed to just finish with is you have, the board has two options, and if you don't want to make the determination today, that's fine, but at some point, what you decide will inform my next step. So you can either decide that you want to pursue taking the properties that we just mentioned by eminent domain, understanding there's a, there's a financial aspect to all of this. But one of the financial aspects that doesn't come with the other option is that when you take something by eminent domain, you at least need to pay some fair market value for what you're taking. It, it's further complicated because the acreage that I think would be of the most value, as it is right now, is in tax title. So that, that's one thing. It doesn't mean that you shouldn't do it, but that's something that we're going to need to cost out. The other is the way in which the town did the easy rezone, and that is to refer the matter to the planning board for their review. They would come back with a recommendation. I think that would involve a lot more conversation. I know the planning board has been involved in, in conversations. Once I get an idea of which way you're choosing to go, I think we would probably have the chair of the Select Board, the chair of the Planning Board, and the chair of the Conservation Commission, and then the Water Division from DPW get on a call with council, and council can walk through the steps that needs to be done. The laying out of a public way is a pretty regimented process for Mass General Law, but that is the one subjective part of the process, is how you want to start that. And there are different paths, so I never need to know.
Do you have any other comments or questions?
Not a.
Jason.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll start my stream of consciousness here. So first I'll say, have been worked on this issue. I've spoken to both people, folks who live on Hawthorne Lane, and I've spent a lot of time with folks who are butters. Everybody's got great points. I'd encourage all of you, if you've not spoken to those two specific people, to do it because they've all got great points. As I, but as I mentioned at town meeting, you know, my focus is very much on the, the health and safety of the residents of Hawthorne Lane, being able to get ambulances up there and being able to get fire trucks. If you talk to the residents of Hawthorne Lane, everyone believed that it was just going to happen, that their road was going to get accepted, that it was just part of how it was going to go, and that's why they bought. And how we got there, I don't have the energy for. If we want to talk about it, we can. So, things I believe. I believe in my heart, I believe passionately, that the right thing to do is for Lancaster to take it over. That's my opinion as an individual member, and I'm going to advocate for that. However, taking over the booster station is novel in Lancaster, and I appreciate that, as Kate said, that is going to basically say that now we have a precedent for another community, for example Eagle Ridge. I would imagine that they would ask for the same thing, and that is a financial burden to the residents. I get it. So as much as I would love to attempt to fast track this through the imminent no vein, my opinion is going to be to refer to the planning board and to let it follow the process, right? But I want to add one caveat, and I, and I apologize to my board members, I apologize to those listening, I can't find the right words to say this, but I don't have the energy for, there was a previous planning board who played games with public meetings and in public hearings, and I don't have any energy for that. And if, and if I see, if this board starts talking about games being played, I'm not going to, I'm going to have zero appetite because we're talking about people's, you know, people's health, people's safety. So I have, I'm trying to do the right thing here, refer to the planning board, but if things start getting pushed off and pushed off and pushed off, I'm not going to, I'm not going to have energy for that. So I want to do the right thing, I'm going to try to do the right thing. Let's have the public hearings, let's have conversations, and we'll see what happens, but let's just make sure we do it appropriately. So that's where I am at today.
I appreciate that. I, for maybe similar reasons, but I, to me, we have a, I'm, I'm very pleased with our planning board and the work that they're doing and the people who are on it. I, I feel like we, it's the right move to refer to them for hopefully quick action before we move toward eminent domain because frankly, that, there's a lot of, there's costs associated with both, as Kate says, but compensating somebody for frankly, the fact that this project's dragged on forever and ever, just doesn't sit well with me. And if we have a process and if we know our partners at the planning board understand the urgency of this, then I feel like referring it to them is the, the right move as well. And then hope for a quick result.
One of the issues is that, as I understand it, the special permit or the development permit was due to expire yesterday.
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 Technically, it goes to the next business day, so today.
Okay. I, I, I've not received a news flash, saying that it was.
Nor have I.
So I assume the permit is expired, which would be further reason to refer this to the planning board. So I, I, I'm sensing a consensus to refer it to the planning board.
I think that's right. So is there a motion to refer this to the planning board?
移到
All right, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Verbal it is. All right. On to appointments and resignations. So these are, we are covering, as I said at the beginning of this, we have a number of openings on boards and commissions that are now and some coming up. What we are doing right now are doing the annual appointments, ADA coordinator, things like that, the critical role of keeper of the lockup, which is the Public Safety Commissioner, et cetera, measure of wooden bark, we've got to make sure that gets done, you know, sorts of things, so.
And the fence sitter?
The fence sitter's not on here. He has been, you know, asleep on the job since the 1800s, and we're quite upset about that. We've been trying to find him to talk to him about it, but. So there's a list here for appointments. I can read down the ADA coordinator, Kelly Dolan, the chief procurement officer, Kate Hodges, municipal hearing officer, Kate Hodges, the animal control officer, Phyllis Tower, the animal inspector, Ms. Phyllis Tower. I'd love to know what that involves, but we'll let Phyllis tell us. Keeper of the lockup, Commissioner Everett Moody, the Martin Advisory Board designee, Kelly Dolan, the measure of wooden bark is Ronald Valinsky, the sealer of weights and measures, the same, town council and labor council, Harrington Heap, and the Memorial Day Committee is Barbara Foster, Amanda Mandy Cannon, Karen Shaw, Ann Fuller, Bob Reno Turvo, Trish O'Toole, Stacy LeBlanc, and Jane Noah Kunske. Stacy LeBlanc, and Jane Noah Kunske. Yes?
I have an ask of the Select Board.
Okay.
I would like to ask to be appointed liaison to the Memorial Day Committee. I've been wanting to try to help with that.
May I ask that we reappoint these folks and then make that a separate?
Yeah, I was wondering if it would be a different motion, but sure, yeah, I have the same motion. No, no, no problem.
Let's appoint these and then I'll make that motion myself.
So I move to make the appointments as Chair Kerrigan read momentarily ago.
Second. Okay, any discussion? No, we have another vote to come up.
I would like to say from a discussion standpoint, I'm really proud that we brought on council Harrington and Heap. I think they've done a fantastic job. If they're listening, thank you for all the hard work that you do. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Oh, this is, okay. Okay, well, only if we pass this and I'll sign. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison, Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion. I'll make the motion to ask Mr. Allison to serve as liaison to the Memorial Day Committee on behalf of the Select Board.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Huzzah. Am I, it says signed by Dr. I made a name or just sign?
Sign.
While you're doing that, since I am appointed clerk, I will go through license imperments.
Yes, please do, yes. That's what the clerk reads through license. It's very exciting.
I'd like to make a motion for application for special one-day liquor, licensed beer and wine, Sterling Street Brewery, event FC Stars Night, location FC Stars Field, 70 McGovern Boulevard, date and time, May 23, 2024, from 4 to 8 p.m.
Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I move for application of use of the town green gazebo, event there, memorial library storytime, location gazebo, weather permitting, date and time, Fridays in May, June and August from 10 a.m. to 11:30 a.m.
Aye.
Nope. Second. All right. I'd love if you jumped to aye though. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I move to approve rental application for use of town-owned buildings, event Friends of Thayer Memorial Library book sale, location Town Hall Auditorium, date October 1, 2024 through October 15, 2024.
Second.
There we go. Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. Boom. All right. Communications. How we receive townwide news and notices, attachment and announcement. The town clerk has asked me to remind folks that if they are looking for a news, news and notices with information about the various boards and commissions, they can go to the front page of our webpage, up in the top right corner for how do I? And then when you just roll your thing over that, it pops up a whole box, sign up for notices, click there, enter your email and believe me, you, there's a lot of notices that go out on a regular basis and it will keep you incredibly well informed. So if folks are looking for it, front page of the webpage, upper right corner, how do I? Scroll over that and it will pop down a big box with lots of options. Notice signing up for notifications is right in there. Next communication is the town offices will be closed on Monday, May 27, 2024, and observance of Memorial Day. Also, I would say this board, although we haven't said it, because we typically discuss these, but we meet the first Monday and third Monday. So the next meeting of this board will be June the 3rd at 6 p.m. in this very room. And now there will be a motion, I believe, to enter into executive session.
Move to enter executive session. The Lancaster Select Board will meet in executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, 21A, for the following purposes. Aye. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically to deliberate regarding contractual language and wages relative to AFSCME Council 93, Local 3720, Public Works. If the chair has declared that deliberations in open session would have a detrimental effect to the town's bargaining position and, aye, aye. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Lancaster Historical Society pursuant to Section 21A 3, if the chair has determined that discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position and not to reconvene in open session thereafter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any debate and discussion?
Anyone have any concerns about entering executive session?
I have none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. Thank you all very much. We will not be reconvening. Have a good night.